All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at seven seventeen. Seven seventeen, we'll use that clock tonight. So I adjourn the special board education, oh no, I recessed the special board closed session and we'll complete that after the general session and we will convene the regular Board of Education open session at seven seventeen. Mr. Williams, could I get you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
Please.
Do you have to be, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unironed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the roll call reflect that Ms. Zuko is not with us tonight, she's excused, and Mr. Wong is running a little late. He did report at halftime that the soccer score in the CIF playoff was four to zero, but he's gonna be coming back from further south. Did somebody say he's there?
No, I'm just gonna say, and that's the final four zero clock.
So the Wildcat soccer team goes on to the next level of CIF, so Mr. Wong hopefully will be able to show up here before too much longer. Of course, for those of you that don't know, his son is on that team and he felt that being there was more important than being here, so. As a parent, I think he has the right priorities, but he will join us as soon as he can. Board of Education had a study session this evening, read a little long, we apologize for being a little late getting this started, but special education is such a large and such a very important topic that we did run a little long with that closed session. With that study session, the closed session, we actually opened it and recessed it, all in the same motion because we were busy with the special ed study, so we'll have the closed session after this meeting is closed. Order of business, are there any items to be pulled or order of business changes?
I'd like to pull seven point one and have, and then take it up in its natural order.
We'll do that with the consent agenda, we'll pull seven point one off and we'll do that when we have item four point oh. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February eleventh board meeting?
Second.
Second.
Looks like you two are gonna be doing a lot of moving and seconding here. Is there any discussion of those minutes? Ms. Maricana, will you take the vote?
Board member Williams.
Yes.
And board member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gilliland.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
All right, item three point one, the Board of Education wishes to recognize employees of the month from Clifton Middle School and Monrovia High School, so if the principals from Clifton and Monrovia High would meet me at the podium along with Pam Fitzpatrick from the Beacon Committee, we so appreciate the Beacon Committee for providing goodie bags and this honor for our staff, we appreciate you being here Pam. All right, so first, is this one? It is on. We're going to have the award for Clifton, so I would ask Jen Gates to come and speak a bit about our two awardees.
Good evening, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here this evening and recognize two amazing individuals from Clifton, so I'd like to start off by recognizing our classified employee of the month, Richard Temez, come up here. So, Richard is our food services manager, and his colleagues report, Richard has a can-do attitude. Nothing we throw at him, assemblies, bell schedules, field trips, lost ID cards, concerned parents, last minute requests, you name it, phases him. He's always willing to help and does it with a smile on his face. Richard truly understands the concept of customer service and he goes above and beyond to give that service daily to every single person he encounters. He graciously makes a pot of coffee for our staff every day, and we are so thankful for that, and treats us to homemade chili on a regular basis. His food services team, some of which are here this evening, love working for him and that is a testament to his leadership, caring attitude, and commitment to the job. In addition, the students have nothing but positive things to say about him because he gives every student the time, attention, and positive affirmation they deserve. It's an honor, Richard, to give you this employee of the month recognition this evening and thank you for all you do for Clifton.
So those of you that didn't hear, Foothill Credit Union, Imprintability, and Axcelis have all provided items for these goodie bags.
And the Doubletree Cookies.
So now we know where the Doubletree Cookies are here tonight.
You must be very special.
Thank you very much.
So, shall we do? Speech?
Speech?
Yeah, speech. You don't have to.
No, thank you, everybody, thank you all. I'm very happy to be at Clifton, I love Clifton, and what a great honor, thank you very much. Thank you.
So we'd like to give you a photo opportunity, if the board would join me up front here, we'll.
Sure.
So this amazing teacher here is in his fourth year at Clifton, but comes to us with lots of experience. He is a social science teacher as well as our Renaissance Leadership Teacher at Clifton. In the words of a colleague, "He pushes his social science students to work harder and really grasp the information they are being taught in a different and fun way." Danny truly goes above and beyond for the entire school community, planning events and activities to connect, engage, entertain, and recognize so many. He's a dedicated individual who never misses a day of work, works long hours, and makes the most of every single day simply put, to change lives. His leadership class is built upon the mission of making a difference in the lives of others each and every day. The amount of things Danny is responsible for at Clifton is endless, but to name a few, they include CPR, snow cone days, and that's not the life-saving CPR, that's courteous, polite, respectful, school dances, lunchtime activities, motivational messages and posters dispersed around campus, GPA honor cards, monthly sponsors of the month for Clifton, and on top of everything, exceptional teaching. He does all this while being a middle school and high school dad himself. It is an honor, Danny, to recognize you this evening as our Clifton Employee of the Month. Thank you for all you do.
Can I do a quick speech, Tim? Real quick, I do gotta give a shout out to my family, who, my wife has been super supportive since day one of me moving over here. My kids have had to put up with me at their school and they've done just, I appreciate both of you so much. Mr. Rose, she volunteers for everything, thanks for showing up, and definitely Ms. Gates, a true pro, 100%, and it's just an honor to work with you two. So thank you, everybody, it's an honor.
Oh, he doesn't want the cookies?
Oh, I do want the cookies.
All right, we're up.
Good evening, my name is Kirk McGinnis, I'm the principal at Monrovia High School. A wonderful opportunity for us to recognize two outstanding individuals at our school and in our school community. I'd like to first introduce and invite up Ms. Tam Lee, our college and career counselor. Tam?
This is Tam, and we are at Monrovia High School, we're proud to recognize her as the classified employee of the month. Ms. Lee is our college and career counselor technician, who has dedicated herself to supporting all of our students as they prepare for life after high school. She just joined our Monrovia High School family in the fall of 2013, and in that short time with us, she has created a focused and welcoming college and career center for our students and our families. Her colleagues say the following about her: Tam is reliable, dependable, and takes initiative in any and all projects that she is involved with. She is knowledgeable with the college application process and capably guides our students in the search for post-secondary education. Tam has also been responsible for successfully planning some major events on our campus, including a college fair, a spring career fair, and a senior scholarship awards night, to name just a few, there are many more. She is also a capable and energetic team member, and when it comes to providing guidance to students, she can be easily found on campus and with a quick smile and the simply but powerfully opening line of, "How can I help?" There's been countless times where I've seen her in the hallway talking with kids, and they leave with a high five or a handshake and smiles on both ends, and that's the kind of culture that we want to see developed at our school, and it's in capable hands here with Ms. Lee. It is with great pleasure and honor that I present Ms. Tam Lee, our 2015 Classified Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Tam.
Shall we put those on the chair while you get your picture, or do you want?
Sure.
Just gonna repurpose that in our college and career center. Okay. Up next is Ms. Natalie Harrison, please join me Natalie. I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Natalie Harrison, our 2015 certified employee, or classified, excuse me, certified employee of the month. Natalie joined the Monrovia High School family in 1999 and quickly established herself as a dedicated and caring classroom teacher, and that I can attest to as a parent of kids that have been through her class. Her classroom instruction is well-prepared, thoughtful, and rigorous for all students in her classroom, and she strives to ensure that students don't just memorize the dates and facts, but that they truly understand the causes and the effects of the historical events and the works to prepare, and she works to prepare students to articulate well-developed arguments. Her classroom environment is focused on one thing, and that's student achievement. Student achievement not only in an academic sense, but more so on developing civically-minded young individuals and leaders of tomorrow. Students are met with a smile, a warm welcome, and a let's-get-to-work attitude. Her colleagues write about her, Natalie is a role model for all of her colleagues. She is willing to take on challenges in developing new curriculum and specifically developing strong lessons that resonate with students. Kids remember the Industrial Revolution, the French Revolution, and World War II for years because of the activities in her class. Natalie is well-loved by her students and faculty alike for being an honest resource in problem-solving and college admission. Most importantly, Natalie always has a light touch and a quick wit to deal with any situation. She is a Wildcat through and through, and we are extremely lucky to have Natalie teach social science. Speaking of social science, this year Natalie is teaching seniors in government and econ, as well as a brand-new sophomore advanced placement European history class. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Natalie was selected by her colleagues to be the social studies department chair, and continues to showcase her leadership for our entire department and for our school as a whole. But wait, there's more. This year she is also dedicated and a valued member of our district negotiations team and eloquently represents the voices of the teachers across our entire district. We are certainly lucky to have her in our entire school community, and it is my honor to recognize Ms. Natalie Harrison as the recipient of the 2015 certific- Why do I get that hung up? I apologize. Employee of the month, because she's outstanding and awesome. Forget all those other titles. Congratulations.
Now Natalie, before I hand this to you, I would be remiss if I didn't read just a little bit off of what this says. It's provided by the Chamber of Commerce and our Beacon Committee, Pam's here representing them, but at the bottom line, it says, we appreciate you for being the teacher of the month, and it says, "Recognizing that today's children are Monrovia's future, the businesses and residents of Monrovia, thank you for your work, your efforts on behalf of our children make this a better community," and that's true of all four of you recipients tonight. Thanks so much, Natalie.
Thank you very much.
Cookies first this time. So you have a lot of reusable bags.
I do, it's very exciting.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, he's excited about the cookies.
So several of us board members this morning had the opportunity to have breakfast with the superintendents and school board members and volunteers from all across San Gabriel Valley as the Northwest San Gabriel Valley Administrators Association recognized and honored the volunteers of the year throughout the San Gabriel Valley. And we saw people that were head of the Schools Foundation, PTA members, and were reminded how important the volunteers are, the people that really make the school district what it is, the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the students, but also those parent volunteers that spend so many hours giving so much to our students and to our schools. So it was great to be a part of that, and it was wonderful to have our awardee, who's the 2015 Golden Apple recipient from Monrovia, Heather Warren there to receive that, so Heather, if you'd come up. We want to thank you so much for all that you do. Heather's the head of our PTA council and has spent countless hours and done so much good for the kids of this district. So the board would like to give you this certificate telling you how much we appreciate you, and I just want to read just a couple of their, they have a program at the breakfast and a little bit about each of the awardees. So it says here a few things about Heather Warren. Whatever the occasion, fundraising, concerts, holiday and more, Heather Warren is always supporting kids, she helps with every chore. She gives up her time, creativity, and joy to make school events productive and fun. She organizes not only one school, but many, her work is never done. Ms. Warren keeps adults working full-tilt, encourages voluntarism in young and old, from fundraisers to planning, it's all hands-on-deck, Heather Warren has a heart of gold. And it says some other great things about Heather, and we can't possibly capture in words what Heather means to this district, and we just say, "Thank you so much."
Thank you.
Come up here, give our picture.
See, I told you, I'd like to say.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item three point one point two, and I will turn the podium over to Terrence Williams to talk about our Golden Bell Award. We're talking about one district got three golden bells and they thought it was great. We've got out there now, what, seventeen? Seventeen golden bells, and this program, I think, is the epitome of what Monrovia means, so.
Terrence?
Good evening. As Board Member Gilliland mentioned, rather, the Golden Bell Award pretty much piggybacked from the efforts of the Healing Connections. What can I say about the Healing Connections other than thank you? I see individuals in the audience, and it would behoove me to even share my observation on those who are sitting here, pretty much done the bulk of the work, people like Mayor Lutz, Paige Bullock, Dr. Whitson, incredible Suzanne Hirsch, Ulysses Gutierrez, and others that I see, my fellow Louisiana family there. But I would like to ask Dr. Whitson to come up and just go right to the point, I just think it's appropriate for those who participated in that capacity to articulate the vision, the past, and the present of what Healing Connection means. Dr. Whitson?
Thank you, Terrence, really appreciate it, and Terrence also was a part of this effort, and so, and I just wanna, and so was many of the board members, and so let me tell you what Healing Connections was about. And it was a, it was really a sad time for our community. Three years ago, we were facing our fourth suicide of a teen in Monrovia. Statistically significant and very concerning, even one. And at that time, what happened is a group of people began to get together, and that was with the city, and that was with the school district, and that was with students. The unique pieces that got the award for Healing Connection, the Golden Bell Award for Healing Connections, was the fact that it was a community effort where we had equal voices at the table with students. It was a community effort where the mayor, and myself, and the principals sat at the committee with students and listened to them about what the needs of the community are and how we can approach it in order to heal the community, hence the name Healing Connections, and how we can go forward to make sure that this never happens again, and I want to say that it hasn't. And we're proud of that and proud of that effort, and so that's why we were honored at the School Board Association meeting, annual meeting in December, and it's an honor to be honored for our efforts because it really was doing the right thing and doing it and talking about it with the school board and letting them know. And when we presented, and that was, Terrence was a part of that committee, Terrence was also involved just recently in getting $1,500 from the volunteer, the San Gabriel Volunteer Center, and for an event coming up, which is our March for Balance, which I will talk about in a few minutes, but it's taken all of us, that's just all hands-on-deck, doing one thing after another to make sure that kids know that they're right there for them and we're really helping them in regards to their mental health issues. And so this group of people that have been involved with it are now here, and I'm gonna invite them up to come up here with me, all those that have been involved in the Healing Connection Committee over the years. And then we have, I'm gonna turn this over to, okay, yeah, I think it's Terrence, I'd like you to announce these folks, I can hand them to them if we have them, so.
Let me share the language involved with this excellent acknowledgement here, it comes from the Monrovia Unified School District Board of Education, wishes to recognize as a contribution member of the Monrovia Healing Connection Task Force, which received a 2014 Golden Bell Award by the California State Board Association for providing leadership and coordination that Monrovia youth are empowered and can flourish in school and in the light. This first award goes to my favorite individual, Ms. Paige Bullock.
Karen Mastriganavi. I butchered it all the time, it ain't the first time. That's the way, that's why I call her Karen M., so. She's my law tale Louisiana family.
And of course, the tone setter, Principal Kirk McGinnis.
And of course, our very own Dr. Loretta Whitson.
Squeeze in, squeeze in.
Sideways, alright.
Don't tempt us now.
I should say, Dr. Jackson, would you like to be up here since you were the principal?
Oh, please.
Yes, we gotta evolve with you.
Come on up here, Mr. Jackson.
You started the song.
I'll go stand next to this guy.
You two share it, yeah, that's where you belong, right?
Okay, good.
The Board of Education, Board of Education, rather, wishes to announce the 2015 March for Balance campaign. As I mentioned earlier, the March for Balance was pretty much an umbrella under the Healing Connection efforts. You know, one of the individuals who committed suicide was a very personal, close friend of mine, especially my son Luke. His birthday was yesterday. Johan de Silva. And I was reminded by him, along with Mason Bryant, those kids are gone, but he's still keeping in touch with all of us. So it's almost surreal somewhat. But I won't belabor such a tragic reminder. But may I ask Dr. Whitson to come again so she can share in this effort?
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that there was a number of people not here today. And I just want to go through the list of those that were awarded. We're also a part of this committee because, as Terrence said, you know, each of these students had a special place in our heart. And one of the, one of the events that happened in my life that catapulted us into action was Sasha, who was a junior at the time, who came to my office in the summertime after the last suicide and demanded that something be done. What an incredible kid. He's off to college, and so he's not here tonight, but this is one of those awards. And those are the people, and those are the kids, that really made a huge difference in this. We also have Lilia Alvarez, and we have Teresa Crooks, we have Claudia Milan, Jesus Galan, again, students that are not here tonight, and Andrea Robles. And also, we have organizations like Five Acres, which is a counseling center, we have Pacific Clinics, we have pastor associations representative, not only, like we said, with the city council, with the mayor president. So it is really a multi-dimensional committee. And Healing Connections came, Healing Connections was what catapulted us into doing the March for Balance. And that was because, the reason for that was, why are we having the suicides? And what are some of the issues behind that? Which we did some surveying to look into, and we realized there's really an issue having to do with stigma, having to do with mental health. And when someone has a mental illness, do they not, they not necessarily go to the right people to get help? And that is in particular with our youth. And so how do we do that and how we reach out? And how do we draw attention to that? And I would really credit Ulysses and Mary Ann Lutz for really helping to champion the March for Balance campaign. Tonight is our kickoff at the school district, which is very exciting. And the kickoff at the city is going to be next week, March 3. And you'll be hearing in this community, not only in Monrovia today, but publications and on our websites, on the city websites, about the campaign for March for Balance. And as we go, there's two events I want to draw attention to. And at that same time, I'm going to ask Paige, because if I talk about student voices and I sit here as an adult and talk to you, you know, I'm not really giving student voices. So I really want Paige to speak from her heart, if she doesn't mind coming up and joining me, please. And as she is doing that, I want to say, there's two events that I want the community to pay attention to that is really important. The first one is March 21. And that's a parent academy at Monrovia High School. That's a Saturday, and it's in the morning. And Susan Hirsch, raise your hand, she's the one that's heading that up. And there's keynote speakers, there was workshop for parents that focuses on safety and mental health issues regarding teens. And it also includes panel discussions. It's really going to be a very productive, rewarding day for our families, and we encourage all of you to come out for that. The second one is March 26, which is our rally in the park. And if you haven't seen, there's been some videos out last year, so this is our second annual. It was incredible with speakers and with attention drawn to mental health issues. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paige, just to talk from a student's perspective about what we're doing.
I didn't know I was going to talk today, so I didn't make a speech. And so, from the teens' perspective, I, let me tell you how I got involved with Healing Connections. How I got involved was from the Teen Advisory Board. They asked for student representatives for hearing, carrying out for March for Balance. And I didn't know what it was. I didn't know who, what Healing Connections was, nothing about it. So when, as I sat there in the meeting, I learned more and more about what the situation was and how many suicides are taking the toll of Monrovia and teens and everything. And so, they asked me that, what to name this rally. And I wasn't quite sure, so I started writing in my little packet, and I came up March for Balance. I didn't think it was marvelous, but as soon as I said it, they're like, oh my gosh, you're And so started my little, my involvement with Healing Connections. The more and more I got involved, the more I wanted to get more kids into the rally and into Healing Connections. Because not everyone can have a marvelous mayor and Dr. Whitson to talk to. So I'm, I just, I want everyone to have someone to talk to, a mentor. And there's been rough times and such, and I'm just so happy that they're there for me. And it just, that's what I want from everyone. So I understand from the teens' standpoint that this is just a boring old suicide thing. Like, no one wants to get involved. Like, as I talk to my friends, they're like, suicides? I haven't heard of any. So I'm not going to go. It's not a real problem. I haven't heard anyone doing suicides this past year. I'm like, that's why you should go. Because if it wasn't for this program, then we would be having suicides right and left from every corner, every grade. And I'm just happy to say that it's been improving. And one of my student reps, I don't know if you guys know this, but he had dealt with depression. I think you all know who I'm talking about. And he was right next to me in this board meeting, and he's been getting a lot better. He's been seeing the light of things. He's been seeing the upside of things. And that's, I just, it was a miracle because there, I was getting a little scared. Because he was talking about death and that he wants to just go away, make everything just stop. And it was just horrible. And so that's why we're promoting this rally, and we need all of you to help. Because I can't do it by myself. I can't run out and say, oh, come to March for Balance, when everyone's looking at me like a lunatic. And I just want to implore you to just push your teens just a little, or students and mentores, I totally forgot the word right now, to push them just a little bit to this rally. Because it may be, their life may depend on it.
Thank you, Paige, very much. Thank you. And again, it's, what Paige was saying is, is that mental health issues come in all kinds of different ways. When you're least expecting it, it could be the person sitting next to us. It can be a person that, you know, we're just, you know, it happens. And then having places, what we did with Healing Connections and with March for Balance is finding ways that youth have people that they can reach out to. Connections mentors within the community, school counselors, other people there, so this can happen, so there's healing and there's resources for them, so we can help them. So I really encourage everyone to go out, come out to the rally and come out to the parent night, and really appreciate the time and appreciate that we were able to launch it here. So thank you so very much. And thank you, Terrence.
Lastly, I will be remiss without acknowledging the efforts and of Councilman Larry Spicer, who is absent tonight. He's a big part of this entire effort. And I would encourage you to receive the challenge from our own Monrovia High School student, Paige Bullock. Just good luck for the Healing Connection. Thank you.
Thank you. That's such a great program, and we appreciate everyone that's involved in making that what it is. All right, with that, we will move on to item 3.2, the board member reports. Mr. Williams, you have a report?
Yes, President Gilliland, I'd like to share regarding last Saturday's chaplain, Terrence Brown, was honored in a unity celebration, a night in the community, as I mentioned last Saturday. It was hosted by the Bethel Monrovia AME Church and Reverend Melody Mays. He currently resides, rather, as a president of the chaplains. And I just wanted to say something about him, his work, his leadership, his integrity, his great character and his positive traits are the example that we all should mirror in this community. So congratulations to Chaplain Terrence Brown. Mr. Gilliland, in addition, I wanted to congratulate the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association for their invite for the new Buffalo Soldiers Post-Civil War Historical Reenactment at the Monrovia High School on yesterday. I was there alone with Dr. Theroisin and Councilman Spicer and others, enjoying this American history regarding our soldiers of African-American descent in the early 1800s, which I was not aware of myself. They will also be at the Huntington Library on the 14th of March and the 15th of March. Dr. Kaiser, rather, has a photo of us there. They had outfits, Dr. Theroisin, you can correct me, from the 1800s to 1900s. You can see the different color coordination. They had saddles from the 1800s to the 1900s, and just lots of history with regards to the origin of the word Buffalo Soldier, which originated, rather, from the American Indians, identifying those soldiers from other soldiers. So, Mr. Gilliland, I was just very pleased for the students of Monrovia to witness American history in an African descent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I just want to say, we've had the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association here last board meeting to identify some of the activities that are taking place around Monrovia in the month of February, which is Black History Month. And they've done a wonderful job. One of the wonderful things they did was put on a, in partnership with Monrovia Area Partners, put on a luncheon last Sunday, a Century of Black Life, History and Culture, Black History Month Luncheon. And Dr. Kaiser was able to represent us. Many of the rest of us had prior obligations that we couldn't get out of, or we definitely would have all been there because it was such a, such a great event. And we want to say once again how much we appreciate the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association and thank them for putting that event on. Last night, in this very room, we met to talk about the strategic plan for Monrovia Unified School District and what this district is going to look like in five years, and had representatives from the community, from business, from schools, and quite a diverse and enthusiastic and energetic group of people that have started the conversation about what do we want Monrovia schools to look like five years from now and into the future? And what goals are we going to develop that will help get us to that vision? So thanks to all the people that were here last night and did that hard work to start that process of strategic planning. Also, the evening before, we were at an IMCAN meeting. Monrovia can. We can provide youth employment. And there are many, many aspects to that, from San Anita Family Services to the YMCA to Monrovia Unified School District. And certainly, we play a large part in finding opportunities and training the kids for future employment. One of our goals, we absolutely agree on, on the board, is having students that graduate from our school prepared for college and career. And career technical education is such a valuable part of that. And partnership with those around the community to provide employment opportunities, so our kids get an opportunity to see what different careers are like before they graduate and have to pick a career path. So there's been a lot of people working on it, but the coordination has not always been where it should be. So that, that committee includes city chamber. We had three of our key business people from this community there Monday afternoon. And I'm sure in a few months, we will start to see what the results of that coordination between everyone and providing youth employment and training opportunities are. So I want to appreciate, want to just say thank you to all those people that are involved in that effort. With that, we'll move on to the student representative report and ask Ms. Diaz to give us a report from the high school.
So I know that Mr. McGuinness has said that soccer boys have won. They did win 4-0. And I just got an update that we are, our next game is on Friday. This next Friday, it's our home game. It'll be at 5:00. We also have Godspell Musical, which is on March 6th, 7th, 13th and 14th. And tickets are $10 pre-sale or $15 at the door. You can go to any ASB, Renaissance, or cast members that will be selling the tickets. We also are celebrating our second annual Pie Week scavenger hunt on March 19th through the, on March 9th through the 13th. And ASB is hosting our annual Togetherness Week from March 16th through the 20th, which is themed the Wiki Tiki Wildcat Week. Basically, we'll have, on Monday, oh. On Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we'll have our spirit activities. And Tuesday and Thursday is when clubs get to sell food from different vendors like Wingstop, Subway, In-N-Out, just different groups to fundraise for their clubs. We have officially got it approved that we will be having our Battle of the Sexes Rally on March 16th. Basically, to promote equality for men and women, more school spirit, and just like fun activities that we have. Mr. Monrovia is March 20th, and tickets are $5. One of Monrovia's favorite events would be Mr. Monrovia, because the guys get to go up and make fools of themselves. We also have our Open House, which is on March 18. And then lastly, we have our Battle of the Bands, which is April 17. They need more bands. And if there's anyone who would like to join, you can visit their website, mhsbattletofthebands.com.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. You almost made me want to go back to high school. Not quite, but almost. It's an exciting and vibrant place. Thank you for that report. Dr. Theroisin, item 3.4.
Thank you, President Gilliland. Before I begin my report, I'd like to ask Ms. Diaz what the picture on the screen represents. Can you provide us with an explanation?
I was nominated for Winter Sadies, which is Winter Formal and Sadies Combined, and I won queen.
Congratulations, Ms. Diaz. Well deserved. I have two items. The first is, with our March for Balance activities, I sincerely want to thank the committee and all the many, many people it takes to put it, or events. and all the many, many people it takes to put our, uh, events on such as this that will address mental health issues. Healing Connections is an extraordinary partnership between the city, the school district and, uh, various community organizations. Mental health issues do lead to suicide and whatever we can do to offset that is really a bonus. The organization is there for, God forbid, the next time we receive a call about a student in distress who has attempted a permanent solution to a temporary problem. We know that communities around us face this, as will we, once again. We just wanna put it off for as long as possible and that is by getting our students and our community members the help they need in order to address the issues. So, a heartfelt thanks to them. I'd also, uh, Mr. President, like to explain myself. Uh, Mr. Jackson has a halo around him of cardinal in gold, having just successfully defended his dissertation in earning the highest degree, a doctorate in education from the University of Southern California Rossier School of Education. And so, congratulations, Dr. Jackson. Dr. Kaiser and I welcome you into our ranks and have, uh, a small gift for you.
Dr. Jackson.
Right now? Oh, yeah. She says I should open it.
You could look at the card later.
Okay. Just doing it again, son.
You were, you're clearly taught well at home.
I'm officially a doctor. Mr. Menlove, I might be able to save you now.
A doctorate does represent, uh, great achievement. He is now an expert in his field. And, and Dr. Jackson, what was your dissertation topic?
That is a mouthful. I knew you were gonna ask me that.
I don't need the presentation.
I know you don't. I'll do that later. Um, to what degree do instructional strategies provide access to the common core state standards as a consequence of professional development via the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol? That was my focus, to focus on instructional strategies for English language learners.
And it is not just a mouthful, but it is, it is truly a gift to have somebody with your expertise here to help us move into better strategies because as an organization and as an educational organization, we are committed to continuous learning. Congratulations on not only the insight that you clearly displayed in your dissertation, but the perseverance, because without that, nothing can be accomplished.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, um, on behalf of my family and myself, first and foremost, I thank the Monrovia Unified School District for allowing me the opportunity and the support, um, the gift of time to be, be able to accomplish this milestone. And then, last but not least, uh, my Wildcat family that participated in my research study. There were twelve participants that must rename, remain anonymous, but they, um, were a significant, uh, force, um, in, within my study. And so, I appreciate the time, effort and energy, um, that they provided in allowing me to observe them, interview them, um, take them away from their family at times. And so, again, thank you.
Well, um, Dr. Jackson, I wanna just say from the Board, congratulations. We never had any doubt going into today that you would come back a doctorate from that defense. And I will say, you know, your thanks to the district for the support is great, but I wanna thank you for, throughout that whole, long, arduous process to get that doctorate degree, you continue to provide that level of service and, and really, uh, go above and beyond in providing, uh, great service to Monrovia Unified School District. You didn't let it get in the way and we appreciate that very much.
You're most welcome. And I continue to say it's an honor and a privilege to have been able to serve in the Monrovia Unified District, not just for the, the two years that I've been here at the district, but for, uh, the entirety of the eleven years that I've been here. So, thank you.
You bet. And with that, we will move on to item 3.5, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. Uh, we encourage public participation, invite you to share your views on school business. If you would like to address this, please complete the Addressing the Board of Education form and give it to Ms. Mariconda on my right. Uh, Ms. Mariconda, are there any cards?
Mr. President, I've received no request to speak.
All right, hearing that, we'll move to, move on to item 3.5, Port One, Public Comment for Items on the Open Session Agenda. Comments may be made at this point or at the time the agenda is considered. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
All right, then we'll move on to item 4.0, Consent Agenda. And, uh, Mr. Hammond has requested that item 7.1 be pulled. Or is there, are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Can I have a motion?
Move Consent. Second.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Mariconda, please take a vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
All right, we'll move on then to item 7.1, which was just pulled from the Consent Agenda, Purchase Orders and Payment of Bills. And since it's a separate, being considered separately, I need a motion to ratify the purchase orders and payments.
Second.
All right, discussion. Mr. Hammond?
Um, the reason I wanted to pull it, um, we've had much discussion on this dais about the, um, state mandating that we spend certain monies. Um, two weeks ago, we had a lengthy discussion about what appeared to have been, um, the state giving more money to public education, but after reviewing, um, the strings that were attached to the money that was in X was, was added, it actually ended up that we did not have any excess money. And the case, and one of the cases in point where the state mandates that we spend our money from the general fund is, um, is in, um, gosh, special education, excuse me. And it's not that we, as a school district or society, should not spend the money on special education. I, I believe that that should be funded separately and that the reason it should be funded separately is because each student is, um, gets a dollar amount that is given towards that child's education per year. And anytime that you have to cut into that money to provide that education, somebody doesn't get the required amount of money. And since it's required from the state and the federal government that we provide, uh, special education, it should be the state and the federal government that provide the funds for the special education, not coming out of our general fund. And the reason I wanted to pull this evening, 'cause it was a warrants for pay. And this evening, when we talk about this and take a vote in a minute, we're going to be approving a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of expenditures for special education for four students. When the average student in the Monrovia Unified School District receives six thousand dollars a year to educate the child, we're going to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to educate four. It's not that we shouldn't spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to educate four, it's that it should be funded differently, so it doesn't come at the expense of the rest of the kids in the Monrovia Unified School District. We've talked philosophically about unfunded mandates. Well, here is a pure case where there's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of revenue being spent that has to come from someplace at some other expense. And this never should be a, a conversation that has a special ed parent being, um, uh, or a, a, a special ed's parent, uh, having to defend their child's education, nor should be a general education student's parent defending their education. This is a state and federal problem that finds itself and dropped right on our doorstep, that we have to carve this money out and then say, geez, everybody else, we're a little sorry, we're only a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on this particular warrant because we had a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of expenditures, but we only got twenty-four thousand dollars to provide the service. Yet we're mandated to spend that hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I wanted to bring this up because here it was in black and white, in real life, in real time, what it's costing us to provide this unfunded mandate. And it's at the expense of every child in this district, including the ones who are in special ed. This is a problem that exists throughout our state and until people recognize what that problem is and how it affects them, um, I don't think there will be a change. And that's why I wanted to bring it up this evening.
And I totally agree, Mr. Hammond. It's, it's not that we, we, we don't wanna spend a hundred and sixty thousand, we wanna spend a hundred and sixty thousand. We wanna educate every student in this and meet the needs of every student in this district. But, it's another one of those mandates that they say, oh, it's in there somewhere, you'll figure out where it's in your budget, when it really isn't in the budget. They really haven't funded it. Uh, so, or is there any other discussion? No, that was it. Ms. Mariconda, would you take the vote?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Item 7.4, Bid and Contract Award. I will turn it over to Mr. Marshetti. Could you please explain this, uh, purchase or this bid, please?
Good evening. This is the, uh, field renovations that we've been talking about for the past, uh, many months. Um, we had, uh, the, the fields at Mayfair, Clifton and Santa Fe, um, they have been severely, um, used, used heavily over the past several years with, and due to budget and, and funding constraints, there's been very little maintenance on those facilities. Um, so what we have here is, um, the field renovation project that we've been talking about for several months now. We had four contractors show up at the job walk on February eighteenth, uh, four potential bidders. Uh, we, on February eleventh, uh, not February eleventh, it was held on the, uh, eleventh and on the eighteenth, the bids were returned and opened. Uh, one bidder submitted a bid, uh, at a hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, we've done our investigation on the contractor, he is legally licensed and the references come back, yeah, very good. Um, and that is about, um, sixty thousand dollars less than our estimate. Um, so we're looking forward to, um, getting started on that.
Uh, just a question. I know that when we go out and we're, we have the internal, um, cost calculations, there is a reason for how we arrived at those numbers. What would be the reason for being sixty thousand dollars? What, what is cheaper today than it was when the original estimates were made?
Uh, it's beyond me at this point. Um, I could add that it's a small contractor, doesn't have the overhead that larger contractors have. Um, he does a lot of the work himself, he works out there with his people himself.
Vince, uh, with regards to him being a smaller contractor, would that, uh, work effort or ethic would be still in the same range, as far as the beginning and the completion of the fields?
Yes. Yes, our completion for the fields are to open the fields back up in the fall, uh, right before school starts. I'm expecting to have grass down, um, somewheres mid-May, uh, so that we have a good, um, a three or four month growth time before we actually, um, open the fields back up.
And not to belabor the point on the sixty thousand dollars, just having gone through the bidding con, uh, process a number of times, there is not one glaring reason why it would be different because of the cost of X, Y or Z that was mandatory, like concrete, steel or something that's not on the field, but sodge cheaper or something. Um, the scope of work that was bid upon, you are confident that that scope will be fulfilled?
Yes.
Okay. That's the main thing.
Nelson and I met with the contractor and talked with him through the entire scope and, and he has everything covered in his bid. Thank you.
Great. Well, it's been a long time coming and we've, uh, we've talked about this several times and on behalf of the Board and those people that use these fields, thanks so much for getting this finally put together. I think we need a motion. Uh, it wasn't on the agenda, but I believe that we do need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second it.
All right, any more discussion? Ms. Mariconda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Item 8.3, Class Size Report and Dr. Ja- Jackson. It's your first report, board report as a, as Dr. Jackson.
Wow, no pressure. Uh, the Board of Education's requested to see the annual report on class size and it is as of importance, uh, based on the fact that we do receive additional funding, um, because we are focusing on reducing class sizes, K3. It is now known as grade span adjustment. Uh, in the past, it was known as class size adjustment. Um, the California Department of Education is responsible for calculating, uh, the local control funding formula, which is the new funding formula we're operating under, um, which includes a K3 grade span adjustment equal to approximately ten percent of the base local control funding formula, uh, for the grade span. And pursuant to Ed Code, Section forty-two, two thirty-eight, as a condition of receiving the K3 grade span adjustment, school districts must meet one of the following conditions. And that, and so this is more for the public to understand, um, what we must, uh, meet as far as a requirement. If a school site's average class enrollment i- in K3 was more than twenty-four students in the prior year, we must make progress towards maintaining at that school site an average class enrollment in grades K through three of not more than twenty-four pupils, which specifically, uh, pertains to the Monrovia Unified School District. The other, um, requirement, uh, which does not pertain, but I'll read it just so we know, um, if a school site's aver- average class enrollment in K3 was twenty-four pupils or less in the prior year, maintain at that school site an average class enrollment in K3 of not more than twenty-four pupils. So, we're proud to say here in the Monrovia Unified School District, the state has, uh, awarded us that money, we've been monitoring it and we have met, uh, the, the class size averages for this year. And we will be continuing to monitor our class sizes K3 to ensure that we do not go above the recommended, um, class size. Otherwise, we would actually lose that funding source.
Any questions or discussion? All right then, thank you. That was excellent from, uh, Dr. Jackson. All right, moving on to 8.5 now. You've already, you've already got the experience, but let me get a motion in a second for the approval of, uh, Adult Education Senior Secretary.
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Dr. Jackson.
The Board of Education is requested to set the salary for the new classification of adult education at range thirty on the classified bargaining unit salary schedule. The Personnel Commission recommends to the Board of Education that the salary for this position be set at range thirty on the classified bargaining unit salary schedule. The salary range recommendation is based on a comparison to positions with similar duties and employment standards. It should be noted that this position has be cre- been created as a result of a reclassification study. The proposed salary range for the new position is at a higher rate than the position to be reclassified that is currently occupied, um, resulting in an annual difference at top step of no more than twenty-five hundred, seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Any questions? So, we've talked about this position for and before and it's not an increase in numbers, it's basically just a redefinition of work duties and, uh, corresponding salary for the person that's there.
Correct.
All right. Ms. Mariconda, would you take the vote?
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Moving on to item 9.1, California School Board Association, uh, two thousand and fifteen Delegate Assembly Election Subregion Twenty-three A. Uh, could I have a motion?
Second.
All right, Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gilliland, members of the Board. You have an opportunity to select up to two candidates as your, uh, representatives to CSBA's delegated assembly. The candidates, we have two candidates, Adella Adrati Stradler and Ken Bell.
Voting for both candidates.
For both, those two candidates that are on there.
Yes. Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Sure.
President Gillen?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
All right, 9.2 is a resolution to continue funding to support CTE ROP programs. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They both moved and they both seconded.
It's only two of us.
We can vote for him.
Dr. Therosian.
Thank you. As you know, we are losing this year about a million dollars in funding for ROP programs, which will significantly impact our budget. This is an issue of the formula that is being used to allocate funding to great programs that allow certifications and really working skills for our students. The resolution states that we are supportive of such programs and encourage, and let me quote this, that the Monrovia Unified School District strongly encourages the Los Angeles County Office of Education Superintendent and Board of Education to develop a multi-tiered reduction of funding to districts in order to provide a soft landing and ensure constructive opportunities to the students generating this funding. We are one of 23 districts adversely impacted, and actually, since the resolution was submitted and included in the board agenda, we did receive some additional funding. We went from zero to about 18%. So, not quite 100% of the funds, but it is movement in the right direction, and it would be my hope that we could find additional funding. I believe that the LA County Office of Education is working to support us and will continue to work to help us bridge that gap.
Well, just as an aside, the ROP programming is an integral part of the overall plan in the Monrovia Unified School District of college to career. It's the, not everybody's going to go to college, but everybody needs a job. And for the skills that are learned through ROP classes, to some people, that is what gets them into their first job and launches them into a career. And for us to ignore that program or let, or allow it to be removed would severely hamper our progress and us reaching our goal of having every student in the Monrovia Unified School District who graduates going on to career college.
In my understanding, Dr. Therosian, just correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, the goals of this reduction, I have to say I agree with, because local control funding is a shift in state funding, giving the local board, us, more authority to say what we want to spend our money on. And so, long-term, I agree with that goal. We need to be able to control our funding. I think the problem here is the way they're trying to implement this. Just cut off the ROP funding and say, oh, it's in, it's in that extra 3.1 million that we have here. Oh, by the way, you have to spend one and a half million of that extra three on pension, and you have to spend another million on something else, and another million on something else. And when you add all that up, all of a sudden, that money for ROP is not in our budget. And I think we're going to have to change our terminology here shortly, because it's going to be career, career technical education. But this resolution just asks the county Board of Education, who controls the budget in this county and how it's allocated, ask them to give us a little softer landing than just cut our feet out from under us and say, oh, the money's in there somewhere. You figure out where it is. I mean, San Marino, probably, you know, 95% of those kids are going to go to college, and maybe ROP and career technical isn't as important in a district, in certain districts. But it is absolutely important and one of our priorities here, so I firmly support this resolution in asking them to taper that out over several years and provide funding until we can make the adjustments we need to provide the programs we need for our kids. Any more comments, questions? Ms. Maracanda, would you take the vote?
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
President Gillen?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Item 9.3, Pending Board Issues. Dr. Therosian.
I would like to call attention to the second page. Our Educational Services Board Meeting Report about physical fitness and our Benchmark Results and Data Review was not submitted today and will be submitted in March. So, we've made an adjustment in order to address some of our own calendaring and testing issues to make sure that the report is a little more comprehensive.
Well, we've got plenty going, so we appreciate you ranging the staff time to fit with that. All right, item 10.1, Next Board, Regular Board Meeting. The next four are March 11th, March 25th, April 15th, April 29th. There are several dates to calendar in item 11.1, and I'm not going to read those. I will just say that the 27th of March is Cesar Chavez Day, and then we go right into spring break. Item 11.2 is Strategic Planning Committee Meetings. I talked about that committee. Three more meetings are scheduled, March 10th, 24th, and April 14th. However, the March 10th meeting will be changed. We haven't got a firm date on that yet, but that's the night of the mayoral forum in Monrovia, and we certainly don't want a conflict with that. So, we will change the date of that Strategic Planning Committee meeting. Thursday, March 12th, we host a Chamber Business Mixer right here in this room, and look forward to a great time with our business partners, and invite all Chamber members to come and find out what kind of great food our food services people provide for our schools, and just give us a chance to spend some time together. Many open house events coming up there, calendared there in 11.4. PTA Founder's Day programs are calendared in 11.5, so if you're interested in those, they're listed there. Any other business, new or old, that we need to talk about? All right, hearing none, I will not adjourn. I will adjourn the regular session and reconvene the board closed session, so we'll go into closed session. And then, then when we come back, I will adjourn the whole meeting in memory of Kenneth Chavez, who passed away recently. We will adjourn the closed session, reconvene the regular board meeting, and then adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Kenneth Chavez, who passed away recently. Mr. Chavez worked for the Monrovia Unified School District for 29 years and was head custodian at Clifton Middle School for 18 years. We want to remember him tonight and close this meeting in his memory. Meetings adjourned at nine o'clock.